I'm gonna bring this meeting to order on June 13th. And we will start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where wishes stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you like how I didn't say ready begin like we're in kindergarten? Yeah.
Here Linda, roll call.
Councilmember Hornick. Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Here.
And Mayor King.
Here. Uh, reordering of the agenda. Uh, I am going to take uh, number fourteen off for tonight because we do not have uh, councilmember Hornick here and I don't want the entire council to be present for that discussion. Okay. And let's move on to public comments. These are all specific, right? All right, we will move on to public comments till we get to that particular section consent calendar. This is uh, minutes of May twenty-third regular see council meeting, a list of claims to be uh, ratified, approved and ratified for payment for date fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Oh, is it on?
It is, that's better.
Oh. Never mind that. Uh, resolution number twenty-three eighteen, resolution of city council, city of Buellton, California acknowledging receipt uh, of and ordering the filing of the annual statement investment policy for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five with the city council. By annual, by annual review of conflict of interest code. Resolution twenty-four nineteen, resolution of the city council, the city of Buellton, California for the purpose of mid-cycle budget amendments related to fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Acceptance of City of Buellton Transportation Development Act, TDA. Uh, fund financial status for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty-three and June thirtieth, twenty-two with independent auditors report and acceptance of the twenty-two, twenty-three road maintenance project.
Motion to approve.
I second, but can I second with the abstaining from the minutes because I wasn't here? Okay, so then.
Absolutely. Linda?
Okay, Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
Hi. Okay, we will move on to presentation, presentation certificates to recipients of the Norm and Gail Williams Buellton Education Scholarships. Uh, did we have somebody on Zoom that wanted to make a statement prior to or after?
She's one of the presenters.
Oh, she is, okay, perfect. Have two here. And this is a certificate of achievement, the Norm Williams, Gail Williams Buellton Education Scholarship for the twenty-four, twenty-five academic year is awarded to Marcelo Andrade. Is he here?
No, he's not here tonight.
Okay. Then the other certificate of achievement is the uh, Norm and Gail Williams Buellton Education Scholarship for the twenty-four, twenty-five academic year presented to Mackenzie Peters. Presented at the thirteen, June thirteenth, twenty-four Buellton City Council meeting Buellton, California. And I'm assuming she is here, you are here. Hey, did you want? Please step up to the microphone and say something to the audience.
Um, hi, my name is Mackenzie Peters and I'm going to read my essay on how to make a better Buellton. I lost my words when I was in the ICU. Painkillers. Painkillers and lack of sleep, they were all contributing factors. I would cry sock when all I wanted was a sip of water. Much of my hospital stay for E. coli and acute kidney failure is a distant nightmare now. But the feelings of wanting something so badly and not being able to articulate it still haunts me. I see those same feelings mirrored during my work with Gather and Groove, Push for Inclusion, Dance Classes for Children with Disabilities. This program provides students in need with individualized support and teaches dance in a manner that helps every child succeed. It focuses on children with conditions that affect their physical, learning, language, or behavioral development. One of the most important things that can make Buellton just a little bit better would be, would be to provide more opportunities for children with disabilities to participate and feel included. Art classes, dance classes, music classes, sports programs. Programs that encourage inclusion, interactions, participation, and acceptance. I've loved every second of my childhood here in Buellton. And with more inclusive opportunities for children with disabilities, we can make everyone's experience here just a little bit better. Thank you so much for selecting me for the scholarship, it's an incredible honor and I'm very appreciative.
It's she, or Brenda Williams?
Yes, this is Brenda Williams on, on.
Okay, Brenda, please.
Hi, congratulations, Mackenzie, that's, I loved your essay. Um, it, it really um, is such a, an important topic that all cities around the country should be paying attention to. Um, but for you writing that essay and for you having the experiences that you had um, really, really lend well to your essay and I am um, the daughter of Gail Williams and we are as a family um, very um, very encouraged and are, want to encourage education and so we want to just congratulate you and wish you all the best and I know you'll do great things and I hope that um, the city of Buellton can make some of those changes that you are hoping for and good luck. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mackenzie, you want to come up here and get a picture? We'll do that one.
I know.
Now, come on up on the dais. Take that. There we go. Congratulations. Having finer tech, technical difficulties. The uh. There's about four thousand pages in this packet.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will, uh, the first one I'm gonna do is recognizing Juneteenth, which is uh, the date every year of June nineteenth. Um, and I will read the proclamation. Uh, and who is the recipient of this? There you go, you can wait. Let me read. Just want to make sure we had someone. Uh, whereas Juneteenth, also known as Juneteenth Independence Day, Emancipation Day, Emancipation Celebration and Freedom Day is the oldest known celebration commemorating the entering of slavery in the United States and has been celebrated by, by the black community for over a hundred and fifty years. And whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January first, eighteen sixty-three and declared that all persons held as slaves within the rebellious states are and forever shall be free. Paving the way for the passing of the thirteenth amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, you're supposed to be reading that one behind you. Sorry.
I didn't bring my glasses, that's why I was reading this one. Okay. Maybe start over. Well, yeah, I can start over, okay. Uh, proclamation recognizing Juneteenth, June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, whereas Juneteenth, also known as Juneteenth Independence Day, Emancipation Day, Emancipation Celebration and Freedom Day is the oldest known celebration commemorating the ending of slavery in the United States and has been celebrated by the black community for over a hundred and fifty years. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, Proclamation on January first, nineteen sixty-three and declared eighteen sixty-three and declared that all persons held as slaves as enslaved people within the rebellious states are and forever forward shall be free. Paving the way for the passing of the thirteenth amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas Juneteenth or June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five is considered the date when the last enslaved people of America were freed when General Gordon Granger rode into Galveston, Texas and issued a general order number three almost two and one half years after President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas Juneteenth symbolizes freedom, celebrates the abolition of slavery, reminds all Americans of the significant contributions of African Americans in our society. And this, and is a time for reflecting, reflection and rejoicing, assessment, self-improvement and planning for the future. Whereas Juneteenth celebrates, celebrations are a tribute to those African Americans then and now who fought so long and worked so hard to make the dream of equality a reality. And therefore, I, Mayor Dave King and the city of Buellton do hereby recognize June nineteenth, twenty twenty-four as Juneteenth Day in the city of Buellton and invite everyone to recognize Juneteenth Day as a celebrate, and celebrate the contributions of African Americans.
I would like to say a few words, uh, my name is Bostie Wilson and push you go. And this is
Linda Riles.
We'll take off our glasses. We have twine glasses. Um, I first would like to thank all of the councilmembers, thank you, um, mayor and I appreciate the fact that you had the enslaved people or enslaved individuals rather than slaves. Because when we refer to them as individuals, we give them back their humanity. They were not property, they were future doctors, teachers, leaders, business owners, entrepreneurs. Um, and so we honor that by giving them back that which they should have had intact from the very beginning. I would like to say that this is the only proclamation that I personally am receiving in person, although we've had five different entities reach out. And the reason why we made the decision to come here in person today is because this is the one place that put action behind their words. It is one thing to proclaim something, it is another thing to support it in action and indeed, and that was what the city of Buellton has done, so for that I would like to give you a round of applause for being an example for many other entities, so thank you. Last Friday, we had our adults-only Juneteenth celebration, which was a rousing success, some of the people um, in this room were there, we had about a hundred and twenty folks from the community and beyond and we had a wonderful time. Um, this Saturday is our kids' Juneteenth event and I will be passing out flyers to everyone. And that is being held at the Buellton Rec Center, we have Princess Tiana Raising Canes has sponsored all of the meals, so we'll be providing lunch for a hundred and twenty-five children, Hannah Hannah Ice will provide shaved ice for all of the children. They'll also be making um, their own instruments and they'll be making animal face mask and acting out the African folk tale, The First Story. And this is done significantly based with a grant from the city of Buellton Arts and Culture Committee and approved by the city council, so with that, we would not be able to offer this to the children in our community and beyond, and so for that, we thank you. Um, thank you for this honor today and we are deeply appreciative, thank you for seeing us as members of the community. And we honor the work that you're doing here and we hope that this continues to be a proclamation that is highlighted and honored every year moving forward, thank you so much.
So also. Yeah.
Yep, I think so.
There you go.
Funny, it's a lot easier to smile.
Yeah, thank you. All right, thanks for coming. And now we have.
We had a speaker on that.
What's that?
There's a speaker. Um, a speaker slip, nope. On the top. I don't, right?
Was this? Nine and ten. Okay. Okay. All right. This is a proclamation recognizing June twenty-fourth as LGBTQIA plus Pride Month. Whereas individuals of the LGBTQIA plus community, including those who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersexual, asexual allies and all diverse sexual and gender identities encompass people of all faiths, ethnicities, national origins, socioeconomic status, disability statuses, education levels and political beliefs. And whereas the LGBTQIA plus individuals have made and continue to make vital contribution to our community, including the fields of education, law, health, business, science, research, economic development, government and military service. And whereas LGBTQIA plus individuals in the United States face disparities in employment, healthcare, education, housing, and many other areas central to the pursuit of happiness. And whereas each year, June marks the anniversary of the Stonewall Rebellion, which gave birth to the modern LGBTQIA plus civil rights movement, leading to the national designation as Ju- of June as Pride Month in two thousand and nine. And whereas LGBTQIA individuals in the United States have fought for equal treatment, dignity, and respect and remain determined to pursue full equality, respect and inclusion for all individuals regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity or gender expression. And whereas LGBTQIA plus individuals continue to celebrate their identities, love and contribution and various expressions of pride. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the City of Beelton, California does hereby proclaim June twenty-fourth as LGBTQIA plus Pride Month in the City of Beelton and encourages all to join the celebration and appreciation of the LGBTQIA plus community. Presented thirteenth day of June twenty twenty-four. And if you have a couple of people want to speak on this, this is, let's is it Jules Blank, Blanco? Jules, okay.
Hello, council members and staff. Um, my name is Jules Bianco and I am a community organizer here on behalf of Planned Parenthood Central Coast Action Fund. Um, the Action Fund works to expand access to quality sexual and reproductive healthcare for all through communicate, community education, public policy initiatives and support for candidates committed to this work. So I am here today to express strong support for today's Pride Proclamation. Um, we at the Action Fund believe everyone should have the freedom to live an authentic life. Um, and we honor and celebrate the diversity, strength, humanity and power of LGBTQ plus communities. We celebrate Pride Month this June by reaffirming our commitment to protecting access to care for LGBTQ plus communities. As a member of the trans and LGBT community, this connects to me personally. Um, we're proud to fight for access to care and education LGBTQ plus people in our communities. We know how important it is for people of all sexual orientations and gender identities to feel safe, supported and affirmed. Um, this year alone, over five hundred anti-LGBTQ bills have been introduced across the United States disproportionately targeting trans folks, their civil liberties and their access to life-saving healthcare. LGBTQ plus people of color and all LGBTQ plus communities continue to face unconscionable attacks on their right to control their bodies, their humanity and their access to healthcare and inclusive in education due to systemic racism and discrimination. At the Action Fund, we recognize the diversity and richness of LGBTQ plus communities and are committed to fighting for affirming supportive health services and education for everyone regardless of gender identity or sexual orientation. Thank you again, council members, for your support of today's proclamation. Happy Pride.
And Carla, uh, want to talk on this one as well?
Yeah, I was going to do nine and ten together, just Juneteenth and Pride Month.
You can throw them both out.
Fantastic. All right. Hi, everyone. Hello, council members. It's nice to see all of you again. I stand before you with a heart filled with gratitude as the City of Beelton recognizes two significant events in our history and culture, Pride Month and Juneteenth. Firstly, I want to express my deepest appreciation to the city council for acknowledging the importance of Pride Month. It is a time for us to celebrate love, diversity and acceptance in our community. By recognizing Pride Month, you affirm Beelton's, Beelton's commitment to equality and inclusivity for all individuals regardless of sexual orientation or gender identity or expression. Let us all, let all of us continue to foster an environment where everyone feels safe, respected and valued for who they are. Secondly, I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to for officially recognizing Juneteenth. This day commemorates the emancipation of enslaved individuals and serves as a powerful reminder of the ongoing fight for racial justice and any, and equality. By honoring Juneteenth, you are acknowledging the painful chapters of the past while reaffirming our dedication to building a more just and equitable future for all. As we celebrate Pride Month in Juneteenth, let each of us recommit ourselves to the principles of equality, justice and human dignity. Together, let us continue to strive to have Beelton be the place where every individual is celebrated, empowered and free to live authentically. Thank you again for these proclamations. It makes me very, very proud to be a citizen of Beelton. Thanks.
Someone here to accept this? Oh, there you are. Okay. Did you want to talk too?
If I could.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just, I'll, I'll be brief. Um, we mainly just wanted, well, I'm Lauren Lastra. I am president of San Diego Valley Pride. And I'm joined here by Kylie, one of our board members. Um, and we really just wanted to thank you all for this proclamation and for really supporting our mission of creating a safe, supportive and empowering home for all residents in the valley, including of course the LGBTQ plus um, community. So we really appreciate um, your support, your action, clarity of policy, um, and working with each of you. So also just on a personal note, I am a proud resident of Beelton. Um, my wife and I live here with our two boys and we are proud to raise our children here and be part of the community. So thank you for seeing us. Um, and also I forgot to bring up front. Um, I am also deeply honored to be here today alongside Vashti, um, with a proclamation for Juneteenth. Both are very important, um, and we appreciate um, your support. So thank you.
It's awesome. And we'll do the same thing. Guys can take that in the middle. There you go.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for coming in.
Oh, yeah. Bye, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. Alrighty, we are going to move on to public hearings. Um, this is number eleven, resolution number twenty-four zero nine, a resolution of the city council of the City of Beelton, California regarding the commitments and publishing the reports required by Central Coast Water Authority Resolution numbers ninety-two oh two and ninety-two eleven. And this will be our public works director, Rose Hess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Before you tonight is a somewhat of an annual housekeeping item. Uh, we're required as part of our permits in joining the Central Coast Water Authority to provide an annual report um, on water supply for the city. So uh, attached to the staff report is document for annual water supply report goes over the different sources of water that we have for the city. Um, we are primarily supplied by groundwater, three wells in the river, one in the Beelton uplands. And we are supported by our state water allocation. Talk about different uh, water conservation aspects within the report. And this year we also wanted to add a um, not a separate section, but in the water supply. Uh, as far as our rights, we have a good amount of supply available to us. And so long as our basins continue to replenish, we have uh, a good supply for longevity for the city. Uh, the constraints, I did want to point out and added to a paragraph in there this year. Want to point out constraints because there is physical constraints to make sure that we can access the supply that's available to us. And that's, you know, with our current facilities, keeping up on maintenance, upgrading, um, weather effects, our availability for water resources, not just drought terms when we do have limited supply, but also we do have limitations when it is raining because we aren't allowed to use some of our river wells or all of our river wells if there is surface water that comes within too close um, of our facilities as well, because we're not set up for that type of treatment. Um, so, you know, wish for rain, but not too much rain at the same time. Um, but I did want to make sure that that's clear in there. We have water. That doesn't mean we've got this free form, you know, we can free flowing water supply that we should not um, be made aware. We want to continue to conserve. Like I, I say all the time, we are in California, so drought is kind of a way of life and conservation to be a way of life to make sure that our supplies are sustainable for us in generations to come. So with that, we have resolution twenty-three oh seven and adopts the annual report um, regarding the city's long-term water supply. Um, part of it, again, in the report talks about making sure that we constantly work on updating our, our modeling system, reviewing our facilities, um, considering, considering growth and development uh, to make sure that we continue our resources for our water. And I'm available to answer any questions.
And I'll bring it back to city council for any questions of staff. Question. I do have one question. Did you have one, Dan? Why was that fifty-foot distance put in there, uh, near these walls, three, seven and eight? Why was, why was that? It's kind of weird and arbitrary.
No, that's um, like a standard state health department requirement as far as surface water. Um, they're river wells, but at that distance, um, they're, they can affect the water that we're pumping out of the ground.
Okay. All right, uh, any public comment on that? So we'll open up public comment.
No, sir.
All right, I'll bring it back for further discussion, a possible motion.
A motion to approve or file? Yeah, okay. Motion to approve resolution number two-four dash zero nine.
Okay.
One second.
All right, Linda?
Hey, Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
Hi. All right, we'll move on to council member comments and items. Uh, Alicia, do you have any comments or items? John? I don't know. David?
Uh, just a couple. One, um, just to take the time to say, you know, we all, I felt that, but thank you very much to this council for what we did. I, I, as a member of the queer community, it means a lot for us all to be doing these things and inviting people into our chamber here. So I just wanted to thank you all personally for making me feel accepted with that. So I appreciate everyone's efforts in doing that. Uh, the other item I just wanted to bring to everyone's attention is over in Village Park, we are continuing to have an issue with dogs off leashes in the area. Um, it seems like it's become a de facto dog park just because of how it's set up, that it's so far off from the street that people just think that's the place for it. So I was just curious about maybe having city staff look into if we could add a few additional signs. I find that if there are signs, people are more likely to self-police because they feel more empowered to be able to enforce the rules when it's someone else who made the rules. Just wanted to see if maybe we could do something about that.
We'll get that taken care of.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, Scott, any written communications? Linda?
No, sir.
No.
No? Okay. Uh, I will move on to committee reports. Alicia? John?
I'm the
David? Good to you. Uh, I did have one myself, and that was with the North County SB CAG that is held in solving. Um, just a couple of things. Um, we had a uh, a presentation on Highway one sixty-six Black Road Traffic Signal Project. We brought it to date on that. And the other one was a sustainable community strategy scenario review and that about every periodically, I think it's ten years. Uh, ten years? It's every ten years, yeah, we update that. And so we had a discussion on that. And that will come back to SB CAG uh, in our next meeting, I believe. Okay, so next business items, this is number twelve. Um, this is going to be um, resolution number twenty-four sixteen, a resolution of the city council in the City of Beelton, California, calling and giving notice of the holding eh, of an election that is requested to be consolidated in the general election to be held on Tuesday, November fifth, twenty twenty-four for the submission to the qualified voters of the question. Should the Beelton general plan be amended until December thirty-first, twenty thirty-six to expand the area within the existing urban growth boundary by approximately one hundred and twenty-three acres, allowing for potential expansion of the city limits within the expanded area, but prohibit other changes to the city limits or the provision of the municipal services beyond the amended urban growth boundary line except by another initiative election. And this will be our city manager, Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I will try my best not to beat this to death. We have been over this multiple times over the past five months. Um, and can everyone see that? Oops, hold on. This is not, once again, not working right. So let me hang on it. Okay. Um, so let me just move this away. Okay. We'll do it this way. Um, as the council is aware, at your last meeting on April twenty-third, um, the city council had made a, uh, an amendment to the uh, prior proposed revisions to the urban growth boundary update uh, plan. Um, very quickly, for those who have, who are yes, who are, uh, may not have been aware of this previously, uh, the urban growth boundary establishes a boundary uh, within which the city may provide municipal services. Currently, that boundary is uh, coterminous with the city limits. And um, eh, as was established by voter initiative in two thousand and eight, it remains in effect until changed by initiative or in this case, until December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five, at which time it will expire. Uh, as this is the last election prior to the expiration date. Um, I brought before the city council a proposal to um, continue the urban growth boundary with some minor changes in order to address some uh, some ongoing concerns and some future concerns that the city may have. Uh, very quickly, when I started this discussion and this, this um, contemplation back early twenty twenty-three, this is um, the proposed revisions to the urban growth boundary concept, a, a big area of property here to the west, this large area to the south and uh, this small parcel here to the east. Uh, as we moved through about a year later, this has um, merged or changed a bit. We've added in addition to, to the three, or to the west and the east here. We've added uh, some properties to the north, um, just north of the city limits. And then this uh, this forty-seven acre parcel here, which is currently the, the Circle JB Polo Ranch. Uh, additionally, a change was proposed in the area here to the south, uh, wherein it would not be included within the urban growth boundary unless uh, uh, an urban use was approved by the county. Uh, in April, this was brought uh, back before the city council. Uh, excluding the area to the west. Uh, at that time, the council requested that uh, the area to the west be re-included, but using the same type of trigger mechanism as was uh, seen here to the south. This was brought to you in May, at which point, oops, I'm sorry. This was brought to you in May, at which point, oops, I'm sorry, at which point the City Council then, taking public comments, determined that the appropriate course of action here was to remove the area to the west and the area to the south completely from consideration of this particular initiative. What's left are these three parcels. They are noted within the Urban Growth Boundary Update Initiative as sites A, B, and C. Site A is the area to the north. Annexation per the provisions of the initiative, any future annexation of property within Area A would require the approval of a specific plan prior to that annexation taking place. Site B, about two acres in size in the middle, that site simply must apply for pre-zoning as must be done for any annexation that must take place and have a development permit approved by the, the City Planning Commission prior to this occurring. And lastly, Site C, that forty-seven acre parcel would require, again, as with Site A, the approval of a specific plan prior to any action to annex the property to the city. The approval of a specific plan in both these instances would require extensive study, both environmental and technical with regard to the city's infrastructure's ability to to accept the, yes, to accept the demands that would be placed on it by the additions of these particular properties. It would give the City Council the opportunity to screen projects or coming in for acceptability before agreeing to consider annexation of them. This is the the graphic that would, that will accompany the initiative that is before you tonight. This essentially reflects Sites A, B, and C. The requirement for specific plans for Sites A and C, as well as the provisions for Site B, are included within the text of the initiative itself. We've had a number of steps to this process, beginning back in February. We introduced this and took public input. The Planning Commission held a workshop in March. The City Council held a workshop in April. The City Council met again to discuss this in May, and then in June here is where we are tonight. Public input has been taken throughout this process. Any written communication has been gathered, compiled, and has been posted on the city's Buellton Engage page. This page will remain available throughout the period between now and the election so that anyone wishing to find additional information on the urban growth boundary process, assuming the City Council decides to place this on the ballot, can do so at the Buellton Engage page, and that page can be found at this address, a very long address up top, or you can simply type in tinyurl.com/BuelltonUGB. Or looking at this here, you can use the URL code that I put on there, too.
QR code. You're so close.
So close.
Sorry, too many, too many.
It's there.
It's there. You know what it is. If you don't know what it is, you don't know that I got the acronym. All right. Well, with this, I'm happy to answer any questions that the City Council may have. I will state that, as I've demonstrated, the maps and, and the, the initiative document itself have been changed to reflect the the alterations that the City Council required at the April twenty-third or the May twenty-third meeting, pardon me, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you, Scott. I will bring it back to City Council for any questions of staff.
Well, I just have one and apologize in advance for my ignorance since I was not at the May twenty-third due to work. Where does that leave us if someone comes in county-wise and proposes something down there on the, whatever the bottom site was that we were calling it? I don't remember, the southern?
The south.
The south site. Do we still have a say or do we still get a way to benefit from that if it?
Well, what, what this does by removing this from consideration here is it, it does remove the, the planned disincentive for the county to approve anything. However, the, the county's zoning ordinance, the county's general plan, and the general community plan for the San Diego Valley here all would stand in the way of a, of a more intense development than we would like to see. And ultimately, in the end, if somewhere down the road, a, an approved, an approval was granted in the future that we didn't agree with, we still would have the ability to, to, to voice our opinion on that, be involved, challenge it if need be. Additionally, I've been in discussions with LAFCO and with the county Deputy CEO and the Planning Department to create an area of review is what they call it, wherein we will designate an area on the map and any projects which are submitted to the county for review will automatically be routed to the city so that we can review and comment on those as well. So I think even though it, it doesn't have the, the, the graphic presence that that area on the map has, we are sufficient, we will be sufficiently aware of anything going on within this area and can respond to it appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
You said we can respond to it, but is that? We can respond to it. We can't do anything about it if they do something.
Well, we, we have actions, we have an avenue of attack that we can, we can take if, if that becomes necessary. There, there there are legal challenges that we can pursue as, as well as simply making a, a move to place this on the ballot and and amend the urban growth boundary in the future if that's
So with this, this urban growth boundary that we're setting up right now to approve till thirty-six, then we can change it in the middle?
By initiative.
By initiative. Okay, because I was, everybody was waiting for this date and nothing, but you're saying now we can.
Well, even, even under the current urban growth boundary, it can, it could have been amended by initiative. That's essentially what we're doing here. We're extending it and amending it by initiative. So.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
No questions for staff?
I do not have any questions either. I will open up public comment, and I have two speakers on this particular issue. And the first one will be Teresa Riley.
Good evening, City Council and, and staff. I am representing WeWatch as a board member, and this was put together by the board members of WeWatch. So that we want to realize that you are finalizing the UGB renewal ballot initiative at this meeting this evening, and we really appreciate your decision to eliminate Sites D and E. There seems to be agreement that Site A is the most promising direction for any needed housing and/or industrial commercial expansion. Site B is so small, two and a half acres, already urban in size and hidden, that any future development there will have very limited impact on Buellton. Voters can understand including those two sites. But Site C is a highly visible location with a residential neighborhood abutting it just below. Those residents and all the rest of the city need to have a specific project proposed before voting on whether or not to add it to the urban growth boundary. There's no reason for urgency, so please do not include Site C in the UGB renewal initiative.
Okay, thank you. And next speaker is going to be Joan Hartman.
Good evening, Mayor King and members of the council. I stand here in enthusiastic support of what the city manager is proposing for you. I have a sharp memory of seventeen years ago when Buellton proposed to extend its sphere of influence by six times, and it didn't have a plan about what it was going to do with that new acreage. It unleashed a speculative frenzy with, was it going to be strip malls, housing, big box stores, Santa Maria-style development? Many area residents had developers going to their door, offering cash for their property because if it were brought into the city, then they would experience a windfall. So amidst colorful demonstrations and a very energetic campaign, the city, city stopped the SOI study process. Residents at that point didn't trust the council that on any Thursday night, they could still approve new annexations and development without adequate community engagement. So we put Measure E on the ballot to establish the UGB coterminous with the city boundary and to provide city and water and sewer and not to provide that outside those boundaries without a vote of the people. The council responded disingenuously by placing a competing Measure F on the ballot to confuse voters. It would have only operated for five years instead of seventeen. Measure F failed spectacularly and Measure E passed with almost seventy percent of the vote. That campaign was followed by a very exciting community visioning process in which a broad swath of the community engaged to define the kind of community and priority projects we'd like to see in, in the area. The council sadly pretty much put that study on the shelf. Nonetheless, the UGB has functioned to direct development inward in the extensive infill areas that, that were available. So instead of sprawling out, Buellton has kept a compact form that is more economical to provide services for. And I think the UGB has worked extremely well, and I'm very grateful for a more receptive city manager and city council for the idea of adjusting and then extending the UGB for another twelve years. I very much favor the plan City Manager Wolf is putting forward for council consideration. Buellton could go in any of four directions, although I personally believe that south of the river, a natural barrier with relatively natural lands is a bad idea. I also think going east would compromise the green belt separating Buellton from solving. There was an agreement at one point that was never executed between the two cities and the county to protect that green belt. And I, I would encourage us all to work together to revive that at some point soon. The choice not to go west into productive farmland, I think, is a great idea, but instead to go north on the east side into pasture and grazing land. That makes a lot of sense environmentally and in terms of economic delivery of city services. Some people have expressed concern about one of the parcels, Parcel C. They contend that residents should have the right to subject that parcel to a campaign to determine if it meets the desires of residents. To my mind, this is a misunderstanding of the purpose of an urban growth boundary. I worked closely with then-supervisor Steve Bennett, Ventura County Supervisor Steve Bennett, now Assembly Member. He was the father of the SOAR, Save Our Agricultural Resources, in Ventura County and a national expert on UGBs. He's now an Assembly Member. He told me that the key in drawing an urban growth boundary line is that it would allow for adequate growth in the proper places. It is not a device to give voters a say over every single project that is being proposed in a city. The UGB is to provide a safeguard so that the City Council goes outside expected development scenarios and areas identified in the general planning process. Then they need to involve the citizenry. The UGB is not rezoning land. It is simply a statement that certain parcels are likely to be annexed into the city for development in a certain period. Residents have had ample opportunity to get involved in the general plan update and now in this UGB initiative. And should these lands actually be proposed for annexation, there will be opportunities to bring concerns about the annexation to LAFCO. Any project would be subject to normal city planning processes as we heard, specific, a specific plan would be required, and that, that has a lot of community engagement. So the PC and the council would be holding hearings on any major proposal. That is generally good enough, but if development proposals involve land outside that area, then the council and city manager have had the foresight to provide the safeguard of the UGB protections. I can't tell you, this is extraordinary progress in terms of how progressive this, this council and city manager are and how responsive to the people. And good on you for becoming so, so responsive to the people you serve. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Joan. All right, we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion or possible motion.
I don't know. Did you have a comment?
I don't have any discussion.
John?
Well, I think we've been, we've gone through this, and I want to thank Scott for going so thoroughly, and I think also we've heard from all the citizens, not all citizens, we've heard from a lot of citizens. And, and we've also made concessions to some and, and worked, and I think we've done our due diligence of staying on this deal, and I think it's something to be proud of from our staff and, and to, to back this without turning all municipal and going out there, you know, we don't, we don't want to get huge, and this is just a little step to make it a little bit bigger, and I think it's a good move, and I appreciate staff's work on it.
Yeah, I concur with Councilmember Sanchez. I think that we've really had this be a proactive account with our citizens. I, I feel like we've had all the residents be very engaged. We've made, really tried to ensure that everyone's voice is heard. I also like to just come back to like, democracy is kind of messy with it. We've, we've heard, we had our vision of what we wanted, and then we've adjusted. You've seen seven different iterations. I think I've changed clothes less times than we've changed the UGB proposal. But I think that what it is, is that whether or not it's what everyone wants, it's a compromise that reflects the best that we can do to reflect the interests of our residents while still having a vision of, we have to think about what we want Buellton to be for ten to twelve years, and this gives us opportunity for growth, both from a housing standpoint and from an economic standpoint. So I think that it's the threaded needle that is the most reactive and most representative of what we can do to help our residents while taking in their input. So I feel like we've done our due diligence to the best that we can, and I think that Site B is one that we need to ask the residents to have trust in the council and trust in the process and trust in their elected officials to do what we've been elected to do, which is to represent their interests, have a very transparent process for that and allow them to work with us through that. But we do need the ability to allow that growth to happen if we find a project that makes sense.
Yeah, and I agree with both, both of you, and, and I think that we have allowed, as you stated, that we've allowed ample time and meetings for people to come in and express their opinions. We, like David said, and John said that we have made some compromises on this, and so I think this is the best we could do going forward with with retaining most of the current urban growth boundary and allowing a little bit of that growth around the area. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve as presented. Don't you just read the whole thing or is that?
Yeah, right.
That's a lot.
Linda?
Hey, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
Hi. Just so you know, Linda, John seconded that, just so.
Oh, I thought it was you.
Yeah, I see you reflected correctly.
Oh.
Okay, we will move on to number thirteen, presentation on Santa Barbara County Master Plan for Aging, and this will be, once again, Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm sure they'll all be happy to hear. I'm not going to say much on this particular item. Instead, I'm going to introduce Margaret Weiss, project coordinator with the Santa Barbara County Adult and Aging Network, who will come up and give the City Council a presentation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor King, council, staff. I'm so pleased to be here. I'm Margaret Weiss, and I am serving as the project coordinator for the Master Plan for Aging in our county. And my job here tonight is to just bring you up to date on what that actually means and to tell you a little bit about what Buellton may be interested in doing here locally within that plan. And, ah, we have slides. Excellent.
Oh, hold on just a second. Let me, let me see.
Maybe.
Maybe, yes. We, we do have slides. I will bring them up here. I just need to make sure there, the people at home can see them also. Okay, all right, here we go.
All right, excellent. Thank you so much. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So the Master Plan for Aging is a blueprint for aging across the lifespan. It is not meant to address only the issues of older adults, but really to address family members, friends, coworkers, all of us who come across the lives of older adults and also people with disabilities. And this was a major state initiative that launched in two thousand and twenty-one. Other states are kind of watching how we're handling this because California has really taken the lead in what they're doing to address the needs of older adults. And part of our goal is to create a plan that meets those needs and also to have a plan so that as additional funding comes down the pipeline, which I have been told that it most certainly will, we'll see. Not a great budget year, as we know, but that, that's the long-term projection. If we develop a solid strategic action plan now, it positions us well to take advantage of those opportunities. So that's part of our rationale. Next slide, please. The state initiative has five bold goals, and they are truly bold. You'll see as we talk through them that each one is a major undertaking. The goals are housing for all stages and ages, health reimagined, inclusion and equity, not exclusion, caregiving networks, and affording aging. caregiving networks and affording aging. So as I say, you can clearly see this is a big deal that we're talking about. And each of those goals has within it multiple strategies. So for example, housing includes things like transportation, emergency response, outdoor spaces and meeting spaces for people to gather. And even climate resilience is part of housing. And that's just one of the five bold goals. So five goals, multiple strategies for each one and literally hundreds of initiatives that support that entire process. Here locally, we'll be working probably in baby steps as, you know, that's what we can tackle, but we want to be moving in the right direction along, in line with those goals. Next slide, please. So the state has already invested really a large sum, nine and a half billion dollars in the services that you see on the screen here. And part of our aim is to leverage those as best we can locally. And these are things that we're already seeing in our own community. And some of them I'm sure you're familiar with, things like the Digital Connections Program, which is bringing more people access to broadband. We have expanded behavioral health and case management and nutrition services for older adults. So really a lot of resources already taking place in our county. Next slide. And when the state project launched in 2021, locally, there is a group called the Adult and Aging Network that began doing some very preliminary work on those five bold goals. They held a community forum to gather input. They began to look at things that they could do that wouldn't require a huge budget or endeavor, but could dovetail with existing efforts. So for example, they provided input to each of the housing elements that were happening at that time about the needs of older adults and what kinds of small changes could be done within housing to make it more amenable for people to age in place. And that was the Adult and Aging Network. This project also is very collaborative. There's a lot of different partners involved. Independent Living Resource Center is involved in running the grant. There is a group called Carrying Together Santa Barbara County that has really spearheaded new directions for how to support and assist family caregivers as well as paid caregivers. And you're going to hear from my colleague Dee Rosenberry in just a few minutes, who's been very involved in that initiative. And then we were fortunate in 2023 to be one of 15 counties within the state to receive a local grant. So the state has had their own big master plan for aging. And the grant that we received last summer allows us to develop our own local plan. And that's when I came on board. I had been involved in some of the early work just as a supporter and now have the opportunity to get my hands dirty on this project. Next slide, please. So I have been asked many times, why are we doing this now? And I don't think anybody in this room will be very surprised to know that we are a really rapidly aging society. So we expect that one in four people will be age 60 and above, really in just a few years, by 2030. We are expecting a doubling of the people over age 60 as compared to 2010. Also by 2030, that's a huge increase. And if it were just an increase in numbers, that would be significant enough. But that population also has really significant needs. One in three struggle with poverty. One in three live with a disability. One in five have a chance of developing dementia. Seven in 10 will need some kind of help, either help in their own home or possibly having to make a move to a facility. And housing, I don't have to tell you, is really a challenge for people. It's expensive. It's hard to find. And if you're aging or you have a disability, it may be hard to find housing that is adapted to meet your needs. So there's a lot going on. And we have some additional data on our website. If you're a data person and you want to dig into those details, but I think this is a pretty compelling thumbnail sketch at what we're looking at over the next few decades. Next slide, please. This is actually a graphic that my colleague Dee directed me to, and I think it's an excellent visual of where we're heading. You can see that the kind of vase-like shape on the left was our population in 1960. Male on the left, female on the right, and as you go up, you get into older years. And 100 years later, in 2060, this is what it's projected to look like. And this is from census data. So we've really shifted from a pyramid to a pillar, is what they like to say. And it shows you how many more people we will have over the age of 50, over the age of 60, even up at the top at 85 and above. Next slide, please. Okay, that's all my data for tonight. I do nerd out a little bit on data, so if that's something you want to talk about further, find me. But I also really appreciate that minds better than mine have done a lot of thought about how to address that concern. And there are models and there are structures that can be put in place. And one that has been really successful in a lot of different sectors is the concept of age-friendly communities. Age-friendly communities tend to be communities that are walkable. They have multiple transportation options, especially important for people who maybe driving isn't going to be their best option moving forward. They have access to quality services, healthcare and caregivers and the other kinds of supports that people might need. They have opportunities for people to engage in community activities, to stay involved and connected to other people and housing that's affordable and adaptable. So one of the things that's really important to know about this kind of age-friendly community is it turns out that it's really a benefit for people of all ages. When surveys are done of families with children, younger families, the kinds of things that they say they want are right in line with the same things that older adults want and are what's described here. So one example that is often thrown around as a way to explain that are curb ramps. Curb ramps, some of you will know, came about after World War II. We had many veterans who were disabled and getting up a curb became a real challenge. And so as a country, we started implementing the ramp at the corner of your crosswalk. And that turned out to be great for people pushing strollers, people who are maybe aging and having sore knees or ankles. It turned out to benefit a lot of different folks and was a good move to have made. And that tends to be true with many of the characteristics of an age-friendly community. Let's look at the next slide. So one of the models that we have studied within the state MPA project is by the American Association of Retired Persons, AARP. And they have what's called a network of age-friendly communities. They provide a structure and some expertise and some resources to help cities get this age-friendly designation. And I mention it because it is one of the things that as we move through the steps of our local master plan for aging, we are available to help cities launch that project if that's of interest. We have several communities in the county who want to do that. And I'll just share with you that I think for the cities that are really interested in doing it, it's because it's a good fit for them for multiple reasons. It's not just because it's a nice thing to do, which it is, or a nice designation to have, which it is. But maybe they're making changes in their senior services and they want to be able to highlight that. And by doing these two things at the same time, it kind of gives them a platform for that. So that's kind of how I encourage cities to look at it, is if you think that it could be of benefit to you either now or at some point in the near future down the road, it's a pretty easy program to implement. There's no cost to it. It's a simple application. The requirements are not too onerous. They want you to create an action plan that addresses some need for older adults in your community. But it is completely up to each city what they choose to do and what timeline they choose to do it on. So oftentimes people do very simple projects. In fact, the cities that I've talked to elsewhere in the county, I'm really pushing them to keep it simple, keep it something that you can say is a success in two years from now or whatever the timeline might be. For example, we know from surveys, one of the things that families really struggle with is if you are an older adult or you're helping an older adult in your family, where do you go for services? There's a whole array of services out there and it's really hard to navigate. It's hard to know who to call. And so sometimes cities will do something as simple as an educational campaign with some messaging about the one or two or three best places to call as a starting point. And we have that in our county. We know who are the best places to call, who can kind of serve all of the needs and then help you hone down to what your specific issues are. I've seen other cities do things like a signage campaign in parks, new resources perhaps in a park that might be inviting or helpful for older adults or people with disabilities. And so they want to feature that because it's something that they've already invested in. So simple things you can do. It does not necessarily require a lot of money. It does require a community assessment, which is something that we are going to be doing. And that is actually one of my asks of you tonight is when we're done, when I take questions, if you have suggestions for me of the best way to make sure that we get the representation of the citizens of Buellton when we do our community survey, that's going to help us. Should you decide that you want to do this age-friendly community project, you would be required to do a community survey. And if it was happening in close proximity to ours, we'd give it to you. So, you know, the things that we're already doing, if we can help you with any of those tools, we're happy to share. That's kind of what it's all about. Let's look at the next couple of slides. This one just gives you a visual, if you were joining that AARP network, kind of what it would look like. There's an enrollment process, community assessment process, as I mentioned. You develop an action plan that works for you. And then over time, implement your action plan, evaluate it, repeat. It's just kind of an ongoing cycle. And very much each community decides what they want for themselves. There are over 800 cities in the country that are doing this. There are also nine states and a territory. California is one of the states. So it's a happening model. Next slide, please. I'll go through this pretty quick, just to highlight. 68% of the communities who have done it have advanced some kind of a policy change and 86% have overcome some kind of a barrier that they identified within their community. So they had some success with this. Next slide, please. I think, Mayor King, that you probably heard me speak at SB CAG a couple of months ago. And at that time, I told everyone on the board that if I came out, I would be happy to bring you an AARP livability index because they have an index for every city in the country. It's really kind of an impressive tool that they are providing us. So you do have in your packet the index for Buellton. And I want to just walk you through a little bit so the numbers make a little bit more sense to you. The overall score for Buellton is 59. That is a good score. You might not think so because in grade school, a 59 was probably not a very successful grade. But in this sense, it is well above the median for the country. The median is 48. And even the highest scoring city, and I don't remember which one that is, but it might be Aspen, Colorado. I know Aspen scores high in some category. Anyway, the highest scoring city is 73. Nobody gets 100. There are seven categories. Nobody's going to do perfectly in all seven categories. And probably nobody's going to do perfectly in any one category because there's many, many indicators. But that makes it good, solid data. It reflects a lot of information. So 59 is a pretty good score. Buellton is doing well. Let's go ahead to the next slide. This shows you the seven categories that go into that score of 59. And it's housing, neighborhood, like how close are you to the things you need and how secure and safety feel in your neighborhood, transportation, environment, opportunity, engagement and health. And just at a quick glance, you can see the highest score, which is really a phenomenally high score, is 86. And I worked in healthcare for 30 years. And I think as an employee in healthcare, I did not always feel like we were doing all that great. There were a lot of things I worried about. But this tells you that as compared to other parts of the country, we're doing very, very well. Yes, we've got our problems to deal with for sure, but it can be worse in other places. And if you look at the scores that are the lowest here, they're probably not going to surprise you too much. Transportation, I think, is the lowest score at 46. And that's probably what you would expect for a community of this size located where you are. I don't think that's a big shot. In fact, this is as compared to a national median, but I'm impressed with the transportation options that are here. I live down the road in Longpoke, so I'm kind of familiar with what goes up and down the highway. Okay, let's go to the last slide. This is my contact information and our website. Most of the master plan for aging work is done under the umbrella of the Adult and Aging Network. And our website is SBCAAN, so Santa Barbara County Adult and Aging Network.org. And that's where you can find some of the additional data. We've got a very nice infographic that gives you just a collection of data about aging and disability. We've got a summary of a report that goes into more detail on that information and also some of the information just in general about the network itself. And let me have Dee come up and tell you a little bit about herself and her perspective. And then together we'll take your questions and comments.
Hi, Dee Rosenberry. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist. I also work for the Family Service Agency of Santa Barbara County. I'm the Senior Services Program Director. So everything we do in my particular program is all about seniors. It's anyone over 60, all about caregivers. Anyone under the age of 60, that's caring for a loved one. The two best things is that I'm a lifelong resident of the Saniness Valley. It's my home and I live just down the road. So I'm also a proud citizen of Buellton. And that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight with Margaret. We work very closely on all the different things, seniors, caregivers, community outreach and so forth. And I have to say before I go on, I am so impressed. My goodness, you're so forward-thinking, but with this kind of mindful, thoughtful. You're talking about 10 years down the road. And that's one of the reasons why we're here is that we're looking at 10, 20, 30 years down the road. What are we going to be doing? Where are we going to be? Where are we going to house all of our folks? So I'm just here to be a cheerleader for Margaret and our efforts and just really appreciate, again, your willingness and ability to think forward. And I think this really melts nicely with your perspective. And I just really appreciate that. I'm so very proud to be here tonight and a resident of Buellton. I always have been, but I'm just really proud of all of you. I'm very grateful. So we are here to take questions. Anything else?
Yeah, any thoughts you have about the project that we're doing with the master plan locally or the possibility of becoming an age-friendly community? Or if you have any great ideas for us about how to get. Or if you have any great ideas for us about how to get input from Buellton residents on the community survey that we expect to have go live in July. Um, or anything else?
Okay, appreciate you guys both coming in. I'll bring it back to council for any questions.
No questions, just definitely supportive of all you're doing. If it's something that makes sense for the city and the council is interested, I don't see why we wouldn't want to participate in that.
Thank you.
I had a question is, do they have senior playgrounds?
That's a really good idea. You know what I have seen in recent years? Is this concept of an all-inclusive playground that includes some of the traditional things that you would have for kids? And also things that maybe kids who have different abilities would be able to use. But also adult equipment. There is a line and probably some of you are familiar with this. There is a line of park play equipment that mimics the kind of equipment that you would find in a gym. But it's out in the park available for the community free of charge. And I'm seeing that in more and more parks locally. So yes, they're cool.
What about like chess boards and stuff? You know, like having conversational outdoor pieces like that in our parks that would be, you know, other kids could use it too if they wanted to, but a more adult activity.
Absolutely.
We had at one time it talked about having a a passive little park I get that at the library or right here in the lawn that you could stop by and paddle or you know, do something just activity wise on a for adults to come. There's, you know, there's one in Santa Barbara, I think, uh, by the the uh, east beach.
Chase Palm Park.
Yeah.
And I think we did talk about that, didn't we?
Yes, that is on the city council's priority list.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I thought we did talk about that. David, do you have anything?
When I just had a question, um, you know, longevity is in Buellton, I mean, the different communities, they live longer and uh, other communities, is there an index for that?
That is a very good question and I don't know. I'll have to look into that a little bit. Um, this AARP livability index does not address longevity. But I'm wondering if there might be some other tools that would. We now have such incredible technology to drill down to, you know, such a small targeted area when we're looking at our data, we can really find out what's going on in our neighborhoods.
I know they have the blue communities too, and I think Loma Linda is one of them just down the road. So it's mapping what they've done or what they're doing.
Good point.
Uh, I just thank you. I, I wanted to thank you. Um, I feel like aging is one of those things that is strangely taboo to talk about. We don't really normalize that. We talk a lot about, there's books on how to handle having a baby, but we all will age at some point. And so I just really appreciate this conversation happening with it. Um, I'm I've been personally affected by this. We're dealing with an aging parent who's dealing with dementia. And the thing that I find is that it's not just an isolation for the person which we're trying to work with, but we ourselves feel isolated with not knowing the resources, how to navigate it, how to have those conversations or things like that. So I'm just curious with this con- with this situation is or um, this program you have, is there a means of just like the education would be beyond for the senior or the aging person, this is our resources that are there? Cities that are doing resource planning for the families as caretakers as well?
Do you want to mention the resource or two?
Oh, let me think. Um, Family Service Agency where I, my work, we're, we're from Carpenter, Guadalupe. We do mental health services and basic needs. So we work with caregivers who come to support groups or do individual therapy and case management to work through some of those things that caregivers are facing. Anger, frustration, guilt, all of it. You love your parent, but you can't stand them some days. So working with all those things in supporting you because it's very, very challenging. We work with mental health clients and they tend to get better. Your folks, they tend to decline. Our folks, they tend to decline. So you're working with a really challenging population. So yes, there's lots of resources. We're the best, but yes, there's lots of resources.
Wonderful. She's not wrong. They really are the best. And they have also been a very major sponsor of this collaborative program that I mentioned called Carrying Together Santa Barbara County. And that was really all about trying to figure out how do we make that process better for caregivers? Uh, and that's, that's still going on. We're still working on that process. And there's a great website for Carrying Together Santa Barbara County that is dedicated right to caregiver persons.
Yeah, well, no, this, thank you. I mean, this is one of those moments where it's like, it's nice to have solutions provided because for the most part you're just dealing with. I don't know where to go with it. So whatever we can do to advocate for us, I think it's critical. We are a rural community. So I think that whatever resources we can bring and to get that information to connect to community would be critical for us. So thank you for having this.
Yeah, and I appreciate you guys coming in. I think this is a worthwhile program. I mean, I'm over sixty-five myself. Um, and you know, with, with better cleaner, cleaner water, better food, medicine. I mean, you showed that chart. I mean, people are living to a hundred. I don't know if any of you remember like Al Roker, when he used to go and so-and-so from Minnesota is over a hundred years old. And it would be like maybe three times a year. And now he'd have to almost be doing it every day, you know, so there are a lot of people. So I think that if we can kind of create an environment for these people to, to be able to use these resources. I know that we're low on transportation. That's something that maybe we can look into. Uh, better transportation for older citizens. I think that'd be great. So I really appreciate you guys coming in.
Are we able to connect them with Pam Nico?
Literally just gonna say that you stole it.
Okay.
I, I will, I will make sure that Pam Nico is the executive director of, of the San Diego Valley Community Outreach, our senior center.
Yes.
Okay, if you're already in touch with her, then I won't have to do that.
She's on my list to contact regarding the community assessment survey. We really want to get into the senior centers for that. So great idea. We're on this engagement.
Wonderful. Okay, I'm glad you guys came in. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I don't believe we need to take any action on this. And so we do know. So we will move on to a city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, I have but one item for you this evening on the city manager's report. Um, as you may or may not have heard, uh, the planning department will be um bringing on a new employee uh, next Monday, this coming Monday, the seventeenth. Uh, this person's name is Devon DeFazio. Um, he will, he will be um, taking uh Claire's place, who is retiring in a few weeks. And so there'll be a little bit of time to uh uh, to, to catch him up on what needs to be done in that position. However, um, the re- if, if the name DeFazio rings a bell with any of you, it might be because we have a planning commissioner named Laura DeFazio, uh, who, uh, because of uh, her husband being uh, hired by the planning department, has had to resign from the planning commission. So I bring this up to you uh, this evening simply to let you know that, that she has resigned from the planning commission. Uh, and to let you know that we will uh, at an upcoming meeting need to address um how or if that position is to be um, filled in the near future. So just giving you the heads up on that. Um, at this point, I don't have anything further for you this evening, but if you've got any questions or uh, requests of me, I'm happy to take them.
Okay, counselor?
Nothing for me, sir.
All right, I am going to close this meeting. Regular meeting until June twenty-seventh, and then we will um reconvene in five minutes to a closed session.